This conference will now be recorded.
Want to give us a, no one? I didn't hear, so waiting on Jake, is Jake coming?
Jake won't be here.
Jake won't be here. I thought he said he was coming. No, he said he wasn't. It's 5:30. We call the meeting to order, roll call.
Commissioner Decker?
Here.
Commissioner Jennings?
Here.
Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Commissioner Warren? Mayor Stone?
Here. For those who would like to participate, we'll... Allegiance. Everyone join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, I thank you for having this privilege of serving our city. I pray that we discuss our agenda. We always put the people's interests above our own. I pray we will uphold what is moral and rational. Guide and protect all those who serve our city in all that they do. In the name of the original servant, above all servants, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, wait. Is there any allegiance, are there any relations to the agenda?
Yes, so we want to add a public hearing for the CBDG as number one under new business. And then that would put a resolution to certify legal authority of the city to apply for the grant as number two. And then item number three under new man, uh, new, uh, business, a resolution assuring the Department of Commerce that the funds will be provided to operate and maintain it if we're awarded the grant. And then, uh, scooting up the ordinance to adopt a pay plan, um, to number four. And then, we have, under the Police Department, an ordinance, um, that will repeal ordinance 2008-084165.
I make a motion, we approve the additions.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve the additions. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All say fye.
I make a motion, we approve the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded.
With those additions.
It's been moved and seconded, we approve the agenda with those additions. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All say fye. Our commissions? Have a couple tonight. Whereas Congress of the United States passed the Civil Rights Act of 1968, of which tightly declared that the law of the land now would guarantee the right of equal housing opportunity. And whereas the city of Arkansas City is committed to the mission and intent of Congress to provide fair and equal housing opportunity for all. And today, many realtor companies and associates support fair housing laws. And whereas these fair housing groups in the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development have through the years received thousands of complaints of alleged illegal housing discrimination found to many that have proved upon investigation to be violations of the fair, violations of the fair housing laws. And whereas equal housing opportunity is a condition of life in our city that can and should be achieved. Now therefore, the mayor of Arkansas City, Kansas, does hereby proclaim the month of April 2023 as Fair Housing Month in Arkansas City and express the hope that this year's observance will promote fair housing practices throughout the city, Cali County, Kansas, and the United States of America. Second. Whereas in 1872, J. Stern Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day should be set aside for planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, Arbor Day, first was observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And it now is observed throughout the nation and the world on the final Friday of April. And whereas trees can reduce erosion of topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And where our trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of businesses, areas, areas, beautify our community and our source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas the city of Arkansas City has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation for the 27th year in a row, and so desires to continue with its tree planting ways. And whereas the first celebration 53 years ago in 1970, Earth Day is an annual event celebrated around the world on April the 22nd to just demonstrate support for economic protection. And it now includes events coordinated globally by the Earth Day Network in more than 193 countries. And now therefore, the mayor of Arkansas City, Kansas, does hereby proclaim that Saturday, April the 22nd, 2023, is Earth Day in the city of Arkansas City. And furthermore, does also hereby proclaim that Friday, April the 28th, 2023, is Arbor Day in the city of Arkansas City, Kansas. It urges all citizens to support efforts to care for our trees and woodlands and to support our community's, Community Forest Program, to plant trees, to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations. Consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda, which includes the regular minutes as written.
Second.
It's moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda. It's written. Any discussion? Single, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All say fye. Motion carried. New business? Open a public hearing?
Crystal Henen, Rantson Financial. So I, um, go ahead and follow your regular procedures to go ahead and get into your public hearing.
Okay. You make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we open the public hearing to discuss items related to the CDBG grant program with regards to community facilities categories of sidewalks and trail systems.
Second.
It is moved and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Perfect. Uh, this public hearing is for us to be able to apply to the Kansas Department of Commerce for Small Cities Community Development Block Grant, also known as CDBG. Uh, we will be filing under the Community Facilities category for sidewalks and trails. Uh, we will be extending the existing central trails, central trail system, utilizing the abandoned St. Louis and St. San Francisco Railroad line and existing South, existing Sixth Street South right away and the city-owned property. Um, so the work will consist of right-of-way clear and restore 2,320 linear feet of 10-foot-wide sidewalk trail, 2,578 yards of aggregated base, grading sidewalk ramps, signage, collapsible boards, permanent ballards, I cannot talk tonight, and traffic control. The total amount of this project is going to be 338,924. I'm going to ask CDBG for $2,554,193. We're going to pair that with the Sunflower grant you guys received for $55,000. Application is due May 1st, and we should hear announcements around July 1st, um, if we have it approved or not. Um, at this point, I've read all the things that I'm supposed, that I'm required to say. So if you guys have any questions or anybody from the audience has come to listen to this or ask any questions, you guys should also have a map that was in your packet that kind of gives you an overview of where this trail is going to be. Yeah, she said it was in a packet.
I didn't get a map.
I'll share mine.
I think it's like Paris Park up to Lovey Watson Park. Yeah, I think it's Paris Park to Lovey Watson Park. Theoretically.
So this is?
That's the new one.
Chestnut?
There's Chestnut and Eighth is right, here's Cover Park, so yeah.
Okay.
So the park, the Paris, that's kind of skateboard park, basically by the skateboard park up north.
Straightaway? Oh, it's not one. Charles, you got one?
Got one. Do you guys have any questions?
No.
Did anybody?
It'd be a great addition.
Perfect. Makes it very easy. Um, so at this point, you just close your public hearing and we can move into the resolutions.
Make a motion. So we have all of that acquired?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, uh, this, up Sixth Street's at the, that easement where the old railroad easement wasn't there, and then, uh...
So bad with directions, but, okay. I was just going to do this.
There's not any more discussion from anyone. I'd say, seeing none from the audience with regards to it, I'd say we make a motion to close the public hearing.
You want to make that motion?
Motion, yeah, motion made. Second.
It is moved and seconded, close the public hearing? Further discussion? Seeing none, see vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Public hearing is closed.
Would you like me to go through the resolutions or you plan on doing it?
Right ahead, you're, uh...
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
So your first resolution is going to be certifying the legal authority um, to be able to put in the CDBG grant application. I do not have a resolution. Resolution? Actually, the number? Your resolution? The resolution number, I don't have that yet, I don't have it. Oh, that's fine. Yeah. So this one is going to be basically, we could put in this application.
Want to make both?
Well, I, yeah, I think this would be a great addition, and I know it's part of the grand master plan of these trails. So I'd like to make a motion that we authorize a resolution certifying the legal authority for the city of Arkansas City to apply for the 2023 Kansas Small Cities Community Developmental uh, Block Grant Program under the Community Facilities Category Sidewalks and Trail Systems from the Kansas Department of Commerce and authorizing the mayor to sign and submit such application.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, see vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All say fye. Motion carried.
Perfect. That also gives you the authority to fill out the rest of the paperwork that I'll have with you. The second resolution is, is providing authority that you guys will provide the finance to maintain this sidewalk or the trails. And I, she'll get that resolution number to us.
You want to do it?
Yes, you want to roll?
Make a motion that we authorize a resolution assuring the Kansas Department of Commerce that funds will be continually provided for the operation, maintenance, and improvements of the Arkansas City sidewalks and trail system to be financed by the Community Development Block Grant Funds.
Second.
It is moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Does the motion need to reference the future signing of number four?
Of the resolution number?
Yes.
I don't know that we have that yet, it gets assigned after it's passed, so.
Okay. All right.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, see vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All say fye. Motion carried.
Um, so I do have some signatures we'll have to do for this grant. The pink ones are for you. The blue ones will be for your city clerk to seal in and sign as well. I believe, yeah, that's the, so that one's going to have two places for you to sign.
April 10? Seriously, I got one on April 10.
Yeah. And make it to that.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Look up just a second, hold your pen right there, look up for just a second and smile. There you go. Now, thank you. It's a moment in history.
That's right, it's official.
You stuck it right faster than I had it smaller.
Oh, you are fine.
You'd like to add, come up with a unique way to scribble your name and...
Might do, might have some bumps at the end.
Just like a C and then that's...
You just have to find the dot over the I and behind the D.
Good, thank you.
I'm just going to go ahead and read this. Consider a first reading of an ordinance adopting the budget pay plan to become effective April 8th, 2023.
So this is, uh, if Jennifer wants to jump in and clarify anything, but this is the cent per hour raise across the board for all employees. It also raises the starting entry level.
Thanks.
For all categories, 50 cents. And then on the top end of the pay ordinance, it, um, it goes 5% over where it currently is. That, so that, uh, those that are at the top of the pay scale can also receive some merit this year along with 50 cents. And then along with that, there is, um, let me find that. There is some position changes. So, um, there, it changes the Animal Control Nuisance Abatement Officer title to nuisance inspector. It changes the Chief of EMS title to EMS Director, Division of Fire Chief Prevention title to Fire Marshal, Division of Training Job title to Training Officer. And it adds an Assistant Environmental Services Superintendent. And, and then the, adds a 50 cent. The board raises that we talked about.
And why are we making the changes in the, in their respective titles uh, for EMS Director and those kinds?
Just reorganizing the department. Doesn't affect any of their pay levels or anything of that, just title changes from...
That's what, that's what Marla said when we did it, is that it wasn't affecting their pay or anything. It was more of an orderly...
Yeah, didn't we just change this a few, few minutes?
That was based off the new police or fire chief recommendations, changing that. Am I correct?
But wasn't those to save the city some money on the way we were, our pay scale was for?
So, there was only one, uh, change in the pay scale when they did that. Uh, the EMS Director did not change pay scale, and the Fire Marshal didn't change pay scale. They added the Training Officer at that time when they did that. So this is just changing titles, it's not changing them on the pay scale.
Do we need to change titles?
Not my call, but yeah, Stewart's here.
So, in the chain of command structure for a smaller department like we are, if you run it as a division chief in those titles, it puts everybody across the line at the same one. And if you want me, I can, all right. I can actually draw all that out as far as how the chain of command runs. With the way that was set up, it put everybody on the same level instead of administrative assistance is basically what it is. When you do that, it creates a lot of confusion and mass chaos in there. In any fire service that's out there, that's the way we run them. So when you come off the top of that, as whether you have a chief and assistant chief, that line drops straight down. You have administrative assistants that come off of that that help the chief and the assistant chiefs out. So it's just the way the command structure is set up through the fire service. In bigger towns like Wichita, things like that, where we try to stay in that span of control, when you run division chiefs, they run a certain amount of areas. Okay, battalion chiefs, and you have division chiefs and so on and so forth. That's that chain of command that we run and the way we run them. So by titling that way, it will actually create less confusion on a smaller department. So thanks.
Are they confused?
No. Yeah, they were confused.
Are you saying you had three people that could tell?
Everybody underneath.
Somebody below them what to do, so I'd have three bosses.
Literally, if I draw it, you guys will completely understand it. You...
We stay.
Okay. Blank piece of paper and a pen. Actually, is that blank?
No, that's fine.
I don't want to do that. Okay. So how was before, would you have a chief and they draw them?
Actually have it right here, according to our budget. Is that correct?
Let me see.
That'd be what it was before.
Yeah, I don't think it reflected. Did it reflect that? I think so, I don't know.
It actually is. So what happens underneath, the way that is set up, and that's what I'm showing you right here. So when you do that, you have a Training Officer, you have a Fire Marshal, and you have a EMS Director. In order for those to come back down and into the shifts, because of the way you had that, you now have A, B, C, we won't get into Captain, Lieutenant, and all that. So in order for that to come down, sorry, too much caffeine today. In order for that to come down, if the Training Officer decides that the Captain on B shift should be doing one thing, then that allows, whether it's a EMS Director or the Fire Marshal can cancel that plan. So what you end up with is one of these items or one of these items, and it creates confusion. Okay? The way our structure actually sets up, and I won't bother putting the Assistant Chief in there, you have an A, B, and a C shift, and then you have assistants off to the side. Okay? They are under the command structure. So you have Fire Marshal, Training Officer, and EMS Director. That creates any hardship in here, they all answer to the chief, A, B, and C all answer to the chief as well. And then throughout that, you have Captain, Lieutenant, and so on and so forth. So if I need my EMS Director to set up classes, she can actually go over to the Training Officer, and then from there, it just equals out. So your Training Officer then would come over the top of that and train your A, B, and C shift. Okay? If I have a mass casualty incident, where we're running unified command or whether or not, you know, just let's say a simple vehicle accident where we have mass chaos. Okay? So I can have my, I can be on scene, running the actual scene, and I can have my, um, my EMS Director handling the ambulance calls while I handle the fire calls. Does that make sense?
Wouldn't they already handle the ambulance calls?
The emergency director?
The...
Or the EMS Director? No, typically on any ambulance calls, whoever's on that ambulance is running the call. This is in mass areas. So if I have multi-vehicles or anything like that, she is, I literally don't have to worry about what my ambulances are doing. She can take care of whatever ambulance I have, whether it's 51, 52, or 53, however many I need. I don't have to worry about that anymore. It's just the way the command structure's always been set up.
I know, I, thank you. Do you guys have any other questions?
Now you gotta come out and go all over.
No, that's all right. No, I'm all right. You're, you're, I'm just, I'm not coming right up here.
I'll pick at it.
Sure.
Sure. So this is the way things were set up, where you have deputy chiefs involved, where they're all across the same line. And even in your book, it's kind of the same way. So when you have too many chiefs in here, you get confusion along the guys that are actually doing the work. The way we have it set up in every command structure is you have your chief, and then you have your administrative assistants off to the side. So whether it's a Fire Marshal, whether it's Training Officer, it's any EMS Director.
This is the cause of it.
Well, that's, people in the fire service already know. Even Jerry already knows how that was set up or initially should have been set up to begin with. When you change titles and you put everybody along the same line and they work every day, eight to five, then all three of those, actually, there's four individuals now, chief, EMS Director, Training Officer, and your Fire Marshal are now all over the top of one crew. You can't have that many people over the top of one, it creates confusion.
Because I could tell, I could, if I was EMS Director, I could tell this chief, this captain knew this. Well, then you could say, as Fire Marshal, you understand this. Well, now that person now has two different people telling them something to do.
I understand what you're saying.
They have three bosses, leaving it the way it is.
All, all...
And that's a lot of confusion.
But they don't have three bosses.
But they do.
Because in, in the stations that I've called and talked to that are not Wichita, but smaller in some areas, um, and they have them, and they said, like, there is a distinction period. The Training Officer isn't even, well...
Not a Deputy Chief Training Officer.
They call him a Division Chief, and he is not on the fire scene. He's not ordering anybody around, his job is to train, and he's there for those hours. And the Fire Marshal doesn't either. I mean, I, they just don't, that's what they told me.
Even in your book, the way that's set up, they're all over the top of the shifts.
Well, I can...
Means that they all have a right to tell the shift what to do.
Well, they may have the right, but they don't do it.
Okay, we follow off of a command structure, the way that, you know, I've been doing this for a long time.
No, I understand that, but that is why, I mean, when I saw it, I started calling other places. We just changed this, you know? And it matches some of the other departments in the state. I'd like some time to get their input on it or their stuff.
So I guess my input would be is, um, we have new leadership within the department now, and, and they need to organize the department the way they need to organize it. Um, that would be my input on it, but...
Well, I understand, but I mean, it doesn't have to be done today, does it?
They're still going to be called EMS Director, Training Officer, and Fire Marshal.
If, what do you mean by that?
That's how we're already running the structure. There's no need for a Deputy Chief involved in that. Deputy Chiefs are usually used in bigger towns, more departments, more than one department.
The division, they're not deputies, they're divisions.
Even a division, so even if you think about divisions, so like when we go on structure fire, you have Division One, Division Two, Division Three, Division Four, however many stories. Okay? Same thing goes with departments. If I have a Division Chief, then he stays in that span of control. So if he has five departments that are underneath him, he is a division of those five departments. We only have one. We have one department. We don't need divisions. Does that make sense?
I mean, I...
For most of us that have been in this for quite a while, it makes sense. Divisions are used when we have multiple areas that we have to take care of in order to create that span of control, from three to seven, five being optimal. So in order to create that span of control, if I have too many departments for one individual to take care of, we create divisions, or we start splitting those objects up.
I have, I have a question.
Sure.
So you have, you have a house fire, and the way the situation's been, been around here the last few days, we have grass fire here, grass fire there that you call to.
Sir, they told me it was a health drink, but it had a lot of caffeine in it.
So...
So I'm sorry.
Like I said, you've got more than one group out at a time.
Yes, ma'am, just like we did today. So what we do is we create an East Flank or Division One, or a West Flank, Division Two. That, what that does is, so like on our very large, large grass fires, okay? One commanding officer cannot, we usually end up calling for more than one battalion, but one battalion might take West Flank, another battalion might take the East Flank. I might give them 10 trucks each. We had this issue when we were up there in Atlanta, where...
We had this issue when we were up there in Atlanta where we had 76 trucks out there and we only had one guy that was running incident command on it. Well, what happened was you get so much traffic on the radio that you can't control that anymore. So now you have a chief that's sitting in his truck just holding on to his mic, hoping that he can get out at some point in time. Creates mayhem. So if you create that east and west flank and you have multiple battalions and you can put them out there in divisions and you give them so many trucks, they can move to another radio channel while this division over here moves to another radio channel. And what they do is from there, since they're talking to that commander on the west flank or the east flank, all it takes for them to do is stay on our channel. So if I'm running the entire scene, all they have to do is holler to me. I'm not listening to 65 other trucks. I only have to listen to one or two vehicles. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And any other questions on that?
Lisa.
Okay.
Randy, why are you changing the animal control officer to a nuisance inspector?
I think that's what Mike wanted to see. Do you remember the?
So she's no longer animal control?
Yeah. Still doing the animal control. That was Mike Phillips.
I think that. Yeah, I, I mean, I'm for them getting their 50 cent an hour. I am. We voted on that all the way back to January and we said yes, yes, yes on that across the board. But I'd like to know if we can get some time on these title changes.
My thought is on those title changes is they're just a title change and it eases up the structure of command. When the fire chief came in, he wanted a change, we did it. Now we have new leadership, they want a change and we're going to not do it. I just feel like if it simplifies things and it makes things easier for those down there to do their job and stay functional, stay organized, let them do it. I mean, we didn't balk at the other fire chief coming in here and stirring it all up the other way. So he's wanting to take it to this way. Why is this, I don't know why this is such a different concern when there's in charge or saying this is how we need to move forward. And I mean, their jobs are staying the same. They're not taking a pay cut. They're not taking a hit.
Right.
They're still EMS director, fire marshal. I mean, they're not getting a demotion in my opinion. I mean, still the same title it was before. Before the, before the previous fire chief. I don't, I mean, it's the same. And if it's, and if the animal control person is called the nuisance control person or the
Well, that's not.
Dog pound per, I mean, it's, it's a title. Their job responsibilities are still the job responsibilities.
But animal control was what she was hired for and.
Still doing animal control. Yeah, the job description was nuisance abatement and animal control. It was a combination position, yeah. And the, and the job description itself hasn't changed. It would just be a title change on it.
Well, can we split them apart? Do we have to vote on it all together?
The way the ordinance is written, I wonder. I guess you could rewrite the motion. I mean, you could.
I don't, I mean, what.
I understand what you're saying, Scott.
I know, but I don't see what the concern is. I mean, it's just, it's a job. It's this, their job title is still the same. Their job responsibilities are still the same. Their pay is still the same. It's not changing anything other than just how the, how our fire chief in charge is wanting to structure the fire department to better the job at the fire department. In my opinion, as a city commission, we should let those that have that decision, let them make it. I mean, that's what they're hired to do is to do that. I don't think that's irrational to say, hey, you're in charge of that. You know more about it than we do. Let them make that decision. They're in charge. We're not the.
I'm just asking.
I know. I just don't think we need to though. I don't think we should split it.
We need a motion one way?
What, where, where are we? Our current status of leadership is interim?
Interim.
Okay. Do, do we have a forecast of when that might transition to a permanent staffing position? I mean, do we strip away the interim or we? Where, where are we in that? I guess the only, only thing I do, I, I'm gonna kind of parse both sides and say that what we, we don't want to be Washington DC. We don't want to be one administration that comes in and spends their time on doing what the other administration done. You know, wasting billions of taxpayer dollars rewriting things. So, so I guess what I, where I'm, where I am is I do understand our, the predecessor, previous fire chief wrote and defined or gave job descriptions and titles as he thought.
Job descriptions are already there. I think he just changed.
The titles or was he changed?
Let me see if I can correct. Okay, the organization, I'm going to pull myself up to this one. To the, he, he gave a new organizational structure that he thought to be effective. And, and why, and now we have a different leadership that says, well, I think this is a better organizational structure for an organization our size. Okay? Now, my concern is so that we aren't Washingtonian is if once we move past interim into a more permanent. Are we going to bring someone in who says we want to add in solid lines and dashed lines, you know, to say that this person reports to this person except for when this person with the dashed line comes in and. And you know what I'm saying? Because you just keep, we can keep reorganizing, reorganizing as such. So, so what's the likelihood that, that as we move past the interim status, status? That, that we're more likely to have someone that would say this is the most effective design as opposed to saying, oops, we should be back here. Now, that's the only question I got is, is, is are we going, are, are we going to, are we going to reorganize with every, I mean, I guess you can part of hiring leadership, but. I don't, that seems kind of chaotic and flux. F L U X. So in case it doesn't come across clearly for, for the, for the workers, you know, this change of things. So are, are we, is this, are we more likely to end up with, as we go forward and get to a more permanent leadership?
I guess where we hired the chief.
One person telling me what to do instead of three people would make my job a lot easier as a subordinate. One boss is better than three people telling me what to do.
And, and I, I understand that. I'm just saying, what if we get somebody that wants to give us another picture like this?
What if we get someone that wants to do different than what they look like?
Yeah, so I.
I mean, that's part of being, their job as the leader is they need to get it set up how they feel like they can best run their department.
I, I understand that, but the reference that you, I, I think what I heard you infer was that this is more consistent with our organizations, our size in terms of staffing.
Yes.
And resource. Okay, now, that's, that's kind of really where I'm, what I'm saying. So then our department is not going to double or quadruple in size in any time. So then the, the short answer would have been to say most, you know, the probability that somebody's going, that, that if we move past interim to a we can't say permanent, nothing's permanent employment, but, but a more long-term staffing situation, the probability is that someone's going to be more comfortable here than here.
Most definitely in any small department.
Just because, just because it, it, it streamlines communication. Okay, all right, that's, that's what I was, that's all, that's what I was wanting to hear, you know? If, if from, from my old employer back in the stone ages, they used to use the phrase best practices. So, so then I guess I'm, I'm saying which of these would be deemed best practice?
Yeah, it depends on which department you're talking to and.
And I don't feel like it's the city commission's job to tell
what their sizes are.
Certain departments how to do their job. Attorney department, within reason.
How they do it, you know, on the titles. But I want to see them get their 50 cent an hour raise across the board. I've thought about it and I want to see it.
Okay, well.
Say your all that until there's local, we can't do anything.
You're right. And I'm, I'm, I'm just, you know, but I do think, I agree with Commissioner Rogers in that. We don't, I'm not interested in telling the fire department how to organize, but I, I, I'd love, I'd love, since the matter comes before the governing body, the language like best practice so that or, or, or high probability or something that says more than likely, more than likely, if we have a leadership change, they're going to be comfortable with at least this organizational design. I, I, that.
I guess the question is, how long are we going to work with an interim? Are we, I have put something out to get a new fire chief for.
Not yet. I, I would, I would say at least another year with, with these gentlemen.
You got more than that, if you have it.
I don't hear a motion. I'm moving on to the next one.
Will I make a motion? We approve the first reading of an ordinance adopting a budgeted pay plan to become effective April 8, 2023 with the yard saw that was mentioned in the background information one through six.
Does that include all of this?
Yeah, one through, yeah, the background one through.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Okay. Well, for the purposes of moving to vote, about second.
They moved in second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none? I don't understand the changes, but I want them to have the 50 cent an hour in since it's all one together. But, you know, it's, it's where it's impossible to, to do it.
But it's, I don't think the city commission should tell department heads how to do their job when we trust them. They're hired to do it. I don't know what's best for the police or the fire. If Rod came in and said, I want this hierarchy of the water department, I wouldn't say, yeah, I know more. I'm going to do that. I don't know more. And I wouldn't want someone to come into my office and say, this is how you need to run it. I'd say, well, you're not here every day. You don't see the day-to-day operations. And they're not affecting those individuals with those titles. They're just getting a title change. You're not getting a pay change. You're not, I mean, it's the same. So I don't, I don't understand the heartache with this.
Okay, I'm, I'm, while we're in this phase of discussion, I guess I'll ask a different question in terms of its relevance. Does this change make the citizens of our community safer? That, that would, that would be. Or does it, does it, does it?
Does it make the citizens safer or less safer doing this change?
Yeah, or does it, I guess maybe does it?
Much safer. I, thing is, like I said, if we have too many people making decisions, most administrations spends eight hours to 10 hours there. You have the captains that are working 24-hour shifts. They need to be brought up to speed where they need to be, taught incident command, every part of that. Everything that we learned as we grew up still has to be taught here along with it. The captains have always taken on those roles because they're the ones that are there all day long. If a structured fire comes out at 10 o'clock at night, the first ones that are going to show up are those ones that are on the ship. The captains are the ones that are running incident command. This is the same talk I used to have even with Bobby Wolf when he was here. I liked Bobby Wolf. I got along with him great. But the problem was is every time he showed up, he took command, which means that he was taking it from the guys that needed it to learn it. So that if he did leave, it was still safe to work. That practice was still there. We always try to make sure our guys learn incident command when they're drivers, when we start sending them out on those grass fires so that that's already there. It's instinctive when they make it, when they make it happen. And so that they can keep on growing all the way through the department as it goes up. Those things have to be instilled in there at a young age and move forward so that everybody understands the change. You can't have too many people telling one ship something different. The education's there, the departments, they're all there. Training officer helps with whatever training. EMS director makes sure that the paramedics and the EMTs and the A and Ts are all doing their portion, making sure their certification's up. And the fire marshal is out there constantly checking in. He's looking at the buildings. He's, he's keeping everybody up to date there and he's taking people out, doing inspections. Everybody has a role. You can't put all those roles on one line and then have them tell everybody underneath them what they want done. If you have a fire marshal that's doing one thing, but EMS director's doing another and training officer trying to do that on one ship, how do you, how do you do that? You can't. If you.
He did say he's going to do it. That he's already running it that way with the other lines.
You guys are looking at a title, but most importantly, they look at that title because they have multiple agencies. We only have one.
Well, I.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I can assure you I'm not looking at the title. I'm just going to know what, what guarantees for your, for your workers, your employees, as well as for the citizens for whom they were. I mean, the one time we don't want to be uncertain with things and that's what you're talking about is when somebody's, you know, life may be in peril. We, that's, we don't want, we don't want.
Make sure everybody's up to speed.
Yeah.
And he's taking them out and running incident commands with them, running through scenarios with them, every bit of it.
So, so I'm, so this makes us
Same.
Either as safe or safer in our operations.
It's safer. No one confusion.
And that's for your, that's for your staff.
That's for.
As well as for the folks who need you to respond in a crisis.
Most definitely. But our first job is to make sure that the citizens are protected. But if the guys underneath that don't know who to listen to. If, if I show up on a structured fire and I'm incident command, but somebody else shows up and they're a vision chief and they want to take incident command. If I have three people out there trying to play incident command on a structured fire, that's extremely dangerous. You have to have one in charge. One. They take on that responsibility for the whole scene.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, let's proceed to vote. It's roll call vote.
Oh, got me to restate. What are we voting on? Sorry.
The whole page.
Have an ordinance adopting a budgeted pay plan to become effective April 8, 2023 in regards item one, change animal control, nuisance abatement office job titled the nuisance inspector. Number two, chief of EMS, EMS director, division chief of fire prevention to fire marshal, chief of, division of chief of training to training officer, and then add assistant environmental services superintendent position and then the 50 cent raise.
Commissioner Gengers.
I want them to have the 50 cent an hour raise, so yes.
Commissioner Jenny.
Yes.
They won't pull it apart.
Yes, or I, or.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Premier Stilman, I'm sorry.
Yes.
So this is for police department and it's an ordinance for police order number 2008, oh, eight.
You missed one.
My MS department.
Back up. Our MS department. A resolution authorizing the city of our Kansas City to enter a mandarinium of understanding for medic, Med America Incorporated, AMR Eagle Med of Wichita County to provide mutual aid in the event of an emergency within each other's range of resource capabilities, including medical transportation services as requested and available.
You guys have already heard, I mean, being a little understated, we want to make sure that we can provide services for as much as we possibly can. Grass fires are extremely hard because it taxes our service as is. Call back is extremely hard. You, you can only do so much. Callback is extremely hard. You, you can only do so much. But this allows us for Eagle Med to come in and help us out, basically. Now, dispatching is a little bit different. They have to go through our dispatcher and dispatch them to go to it. It's no cost to us. Eagle Med basically bills whoever's patient. The other thing is, is with the, what did you call that? A reevaluation of the hospital because they're not shutting down. We don't know how far we're going to be able to do that and still get basically paid back. So the shortages over there in Winfield, they went from 600 transfers to Wichita, down to four. So we'd like to keep them in the area and even the hospital said that our transfers went up, what, 4%? We can't handle that.
Not right now.
Yeah. Yeah. So what we're doing is we're just, we're being proactive, making sure that we take care of our community. And this is one way that we can be proactive, making sure that our community is taken care of.
Well, this is something I visited with Randy about and said, we might be able to put this on hold and look at it, do some more investigating. But Global Medical Responses, which is your air med care network. So they build differently than we do.
They do.
And they're a private for-profit company. And so right now, when it comes to our citizens, if they can't pay the ambulance bill over whatever insurance or Medicare paid for, if they can't pay it, we send them to set off. We don't go after them as far as legally or take them to court or any of that. They, they send it over there to set off and it sits. And if they can't, you know, if there's a, a refund that they would have coming, then it would get captured. This is a completely different animal. And we're already using Eagle Med. They do come now because I talked to their office and they do respond when they're called and asked to come and transfer, whether it's on the ground or in air. And they have about 320 base locations in the, in the United States. And so we were going over there, how they collect and what they're willing to do and what may change with that. So I'd like to take some time to see that, maybe refine a contract if you're going to be here this, you know, that'd be something the city attorney would do. We did 157 transfers in 2021. They were not all done by Arc City. They were done by several agencies.
Were those numbers from the ER?
Those numbers were directly from the hospital, yes.
So that's how many transfers they had? That's not.
Completely.
Okay, that's, because that's not my numbers, but.
Your numbers would be lower.
Right.
Yes. And in 2022, that 164, again, not all done by Arc City. So there was Winfield, there was Eagle Med, there was, you know, whoever else picked people up. So I'd like to have a chance to either modify that contract so we make sure our citizens are protected because some of those bills are astronomical. And they're just not, they're just not able to do it. I, they said that air lift cost $100,000.
And that's why I tried to do ground transport.
And in the ground transport, she was telling me by mileage and it was going to take her a little longer than today to get me the information I needed, but, uh, and then talk to their legal team about their collection agency, about how.
Ask them if they have a subscription program for ground because I know that's something that.
They do have a subscription program for the cities that we could join, but she was not able to give me the numbers of what that would cost.
Okay. We're still working on one for us. I'm just waiting on the insurance commissioner's office to make sure we're doing everything legally.
Right. And at any time, our numbers could go up as far as employees. And then we've got a situation where maybe they're housed here and they don't want to leave. And I don't want them to get first call.
Yeah, they never get first call, but I understand what you're saying.
Yeah. She told me that they, that's normally how it works.
Well, on the transportation side from the hospital, then they would take those because if we can't get reimbursed, then the city still loses money.
Right. And how we're doing it now is, like I said, they, we send it to set off. I'm correct on that. Yeah. And if it gets captured, it gets captured, but we don't take them to court, garnish them and that kind of stuff. So I'd like some time to look at that deeper.
With the motion to table it.
I would make.
My thing is, what's going to keep the citizens safe? Do we have the people now to do the job? Or do we really need them?
We do want to have a.
Do we need these, do we need Med Evac Mid America now to help keep the citizens safe?
It's.
It is a short time until we can get everybody caught up to speed on their education.
Yeah, we're working on that now. We've got four in for advanced level training now. And then three more wanting to go to paramedic this school this fall, but we can't send them all at the same time.
No. And I think all we're saying here is you're already using.
My question to you guys is, what's the best approach to keep the citizens safe? Because I have citizens calling me and say, do we even have anyone to take, if there's two calls and then one person has to take the paramedic, do I have a paramedic for me if I get in a heart attack?
Yes.
I mean, that's a question I have. And so I say, yes, we should be good, but I mean, would this, is this necessary, I guess now to keep the citizens? That's my question.
Safety fallback is what we're using for. As long as we can maintain, we take the calls. But if we run short, then I don't have anybody.
And we can still call them in.
And the, by the time they get here.
We have one, two, three paramedic, four kind of chat locally, four paramedics locally. But if I'm out of town, they don't page me. You got to call me. I'll sleep right through that page. You don't call me.
Again, chat's administration. So that's an eight hour time. So you're looking at three on a 24 hour contract.
What's our understanding? Is it just, I mean, there, we have a fee for it?
It's just, no, not to us.
No. I mean, it's the same as we've always had, but if we could get a chance to have the city attorney work with them as far as protecting our citizens financially as well as medically before.
So if they come down there and they say, this is our contract, take it or leave it.
Well, they may say that.
Then what are we, then what are we going to do then?
Well, we may have to do that, but we haven't even explored the opportunity.
You know what their charges are for ground?
Again, today she said, I will get you this information. I don't have it right now. And I will get you the information for being a member as a city so that that does a little more alleviating of financial responsibility.
I mean, and as far as I know, they're still under the same hits that we are when Medicaid and Medicare comes into play. It's when you start getting into a personal insurance that you start taking those hits.
Or no insurance.
Or no insurance.
Which is why we raised our rates to.
Yeah.
Over the.
I'm not saying don't do it forever. I'm saying, look at the numbers.
Temporary deal until we get everybody trained to where we can protect the city. This is just a preventative fallback measure in case something was to happen that they still have that protection. This is in the, for the safety of the citizens, not looking at billing. I mean, if my mom. Had a heart attack and they're on a grass fire and another med call, I'll pay the price.
We had to call Winfield over to Strather Field because we had a grass fire and had two ambulances out. If the third call wouldn't come in, we had no one else, no one.
And that's not.
Come over to Strather Field, but then guess what happened? Winfield's got fire calls. So, and, and two calls. So then we've got one of their units tied up at Strather Field to cover us on a might be call, but we have to keep our community covered. Because at the end of the day, my job is to make sure the citizens we serve are taken care of. That's my job.
I understand that. I'm just asking if we can look at it and see if we can protect them financially. I understand panic and I understand immediate concern and I understand.
I wouldn't call it panic. I would just call it, I don't want one of my relatives or my neighbors to call and say, hey, you're on the commission. You didn't have anyone here for me. And my mom died because of this. I mean, there's, that's the thing. You want to make sure you're, the safety is what matters right now. It's not about a contract or what a billing may be for someone. I bet a majority of people would rather have a bill and be alive than be dead. I would think. I may be wrong on that. That'd be my personal assessment.
And all I'm asking is, can we look at this? Are they planning on being here in the station tomorrow?
They're actually stationed out of the Winfield ER. Do they have sleeping quarters? Is that what their quarters, their quarters are in Winfield Hospital?
So, and you call them when you need them?
Um, we, I, what I have done in the past is when they've called and it's been something we can't take, I tell them, call dispatch. Because they have dispatch number of the hospital. I'll say, call dispatch's number and push three. That will take you directly to ground. And that's the way they do it. And then.
Okay. So that is available right now, right this minute. I say you can do that.
Yes, ma'am.
So that's all I'm asking is can we look at a contract where we can do some financial protection if it's available?
Oh, we can try it.
Yeah.
That's slippery slope to play that game, I think.
Well, I'm not playing a game.
I know, but this is, it's a contract we're worried about, but the citizens are what I'm worried about.
I'm worried about all of it, the entirety of a, a.
Life and death, I think, is more than a contract though.
And don't get me wrong. I understand financial strain, medical financial strains. I lived it. I understand that. I, I truly, truly do understand that, but I have to be able to look at myself in the mirror every morning and know that I, my decisions.
And that's fine.
My decisions.
I understand what you're saying. Right now, our citizens have all those ambulances.
I understand.
Arc City first, Winfield, E, Eagle Med, whatever they need. There's, we have those groupings. Is this going to be in our fire station, this ambulance?
I don't know.
As of right now, but is it with the memorandum of understanding?
Uh, no, not right yet. I mean, is it a possibility? Yeah.
Okay.
If, if, if we run short and we can't provide, if we can have them there for a callback or a fallback, yeah. But as of right now, no.
Well, I'm just.
My deal is, is we still have to respond within a certain amount of time.
Absolutely.
So if they're closer here and that does happen to happen, then is that not better protecting our citizens?
Well, with or without the memorandum of understanding, will they come if you call them?
Not for 911 calls if we're all busy.
Did you not just say that you can route the call to them?
That's.
For a hospital transfer.
Okay.
They've not for 911. They, they wouldn't come probably with not, without a memorandum of understanding because you have to have those mutual aid agreements. It's the same thing as a mutual aid agreement. You have to have those mutual aid agreements in place. And you know, that's kind of, we got into this once before, you know, trying to explain how it is. We do have a mutual aid agreement with Winfield Fire, which is why today when we called them to Strather Field, they talked in their truck and came, but then they got busy. So.
That might be where the confusion is too. For transfers from the hospital, yes, the hospitals can do whatever they want to on that. They don't even have to call us for that. This is for 911 calls. If we can't, if we don't have the personnel to be able to call, it's a mutual aid agreement for 911 calls. That's, probably should have made that clear right off the bat. Yeah, I apologize.
Well, I think the question and answer thing provides a lot of meaningful information that perhaps expediency might have glossed over. I think that subtle difference matters.
Yep.
What the hospital has a right to do, what 911 has a right to do, all of those things to the lay citizen is like, you know, when I need to get there, I need to get there.
They usually will call us first to see if we have the appropriate staff to take it. If we don't, we let it go. I'm very good. You can ask Mr. Bowman. I'll make the calls for them if I have to. Just to make sure the patient gets to where they need to be.
So, yeah, okay. I, I, and so what, what, what the commissioner is doing is perhaps in, in, in somewhat of a painstaking way, prompting you to give the depth of thought that you've given to this, you know, give it those subtleties, I think, you know. And I think that's important. I know we want to get in and out of here, you know, in a, you know, incisive amount of time. But just so people don't think that we're that one, you're bringing these, you know, whimsical proposals and two, that we're just voting to get done and out of here. I love the conversation and the discussion and the questions that are asked and the answers that are being given that are guiding the decision. I think the voting citizens, any non-voting citizens of the community need to know we're having this dialogue. So I, that's good. That's good. I think it fleshed out some things that helped too.
So how long is the memorandum of understanding in place?
Cancel it anytime.
You can?
Can. All that information would have been nice to know earlier. Sorry.
Doing it the right way takes a little time for us. And I appreciate, again, you know, there's, there's just a lot to be said for asking the questions, you know, and getting us to a place where we, where we, I think we all understand what, what the stakes are. Okay. So we're, it's not something we're signing our lives away to. We can't, we can back out of it if we need to be out of it. But functionally, then I give gravity also to Commissioner Rogers and saying, we, we need to do. We used to talk about service to the citizens, you know, that used to be the theme of local governments is service to the citizens. And so I, I don't, in the past, in the previous agenda item in this one, I don't see where we're, we're compromising service to the citizens. We may not agree on the approach to it, but if we're not compromising the response time of our, uh, to our citizens. I'll stick up.
Make the motion, sir?
No.
I'll make a motion.
Motion makers.
Approve a resolution authorizing the city of our Kansas City to enter into a memorandum memorandum of understanding with Med Evac Mid America, INC of Wichita, Kansas, to provide mutual aid in the event of an emergency within each other's range of resource capabilities, including medical transportation services as requested and available.
I'll make a commotion.
They moved in second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Okay. Police Department.
An ordinance repealing ordinance number 2008-08-4165 regarding micro utility trucks, which conflicts with provisions of ordinance number 2023-03-7576, amending municipal code as to reflect to the city of our Kansas City.
So when the ordinance was passed at the last meeting for the, or the ATV mini trucks, all that, the conflict, this was already on the books and so are conflicts. So, do you have any?
Well, that's about as simple as it was. This, the one type, the micro utility trucks was on the books already, asked to cover three things. It's conflicted with one of those things. This just needs to be repealed so that we're under the new law that you all passed last.
That's me. This for Commissioner Rogers. I'm not even going to ask a question. In order, I make a motion, ordinance repealing ordinance number 2008-08-4165 regarding micro utility trucks, which conflicts with the provisions of ordinance number 2023-03-7576, pending mute, amending municipal code as to reflect to the city of our Kansas City, Kansas.
I'll second it.
They moved in second. Is there any further discussion about it? Seeing none, we proceed to vote.
Don't give anyone the option. No kidding.
Commissioner Gengers?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Aye.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
And you're so.
Yes. I am for discussion by the city commissioners. Right now, I want to ask Randy. We have grass fires. We need a way to get water quickly. We need to get that done at, down there. My.
The spigot.
The spigot, yes, because they're driving. My grandson, my son have been driving to Gute Springs so they can fill up in a very short amount of time to get to fires.
I'll check with Rod. He's been working with Chris Minin on that and locations and stuff. So I'll, I'll figure out where he's at on that. So.
Okay. Appreciate it. I'm starting to get a little scared.
Me and the commissioners.
Oh, I'm always for water. Can you put more hydrants around? Oh, you want, I'd be happy.
I, um, I guess I'm inquiring, uh, Mr. City Manager, if there's, we could seek an opportunity for some sort of discussion with the funding partners. we could seek an opportunity for some sort of discussion with the funding partners for the Cali County Humane Shelter. And not principally overfunding, but just over the health of that service to the county. In general, I understand that the facility now some two plus decades old, which is a lot older for, for pets and animals than it would be for humans, uh, needs some attention. I knew they have some funding issues also. But I also am an advocate in the phone call. I said, there are organizations like SPCA. I'm just topping all of this out here at one time, the, you know, the dialogue, if there is, where everybody's at Winfield, the county, who else is funding. But I think my response in the phone call that I had was, I think that you ought to reach out to like SPCA or some of those organizations nationally that are funded, that can give us some campaign material about responsible pet ownership, so that folks aren't just grabbing up, you know, the cute little kitten and taking it home and then saying, oh, we don't cat and turning it loose and letting it become feral, et cetera, et cetera. So that, you know, and the dumping, you know, taking them out there while the facility's closed and just dropping off pets, those things. That was not what the intent of the humane shelter was, to just be a place to get rid of your responsibility. But I don't know if we can do it. I'm probably going to anger some people with the things I just said. But if we can do it in a way that kind of encourages people to be, you know, thoughtful about, you know, animal life is, you know, going forward, but.
They're doing the low cost spading and neutering.
You know, that, that, that.
We could figure out and, and maybe get some partners who could help even the low cost people who don't have that money to maybe scholarship it or, or help them, you know, if we could put that out there. Originally, when they did that, it was supposed to stand alone, be its own. And it was, Jill helped me out, uh, no, do you remember it? No? Okay. So I think it was supposed to be no kill and it was going to be this great thing. We closed our. Yeah, we, we closed our pound and Winfield kept theirs open. We closed ours and just started going out there and then we wound up donating labor and wound up putting money into it, but I understand they're having problems.
So, um, City Manager Winfield, myself and the director have been meeting. We, we took a tour of the facility a week ago. There's a lot of deferred maintenance out there, stuff that's, um, that needs to be taken care of, but. And, uh, you know, we provide forty some thousand dollars a year in funding, uh, Winfield does, our city does. And they're having, um, they have some issues with help like the rest of us. And they're, uh, also, um, from inspection recently, they have some areas that they, their ability to take in as many animals has been reduced. So, um, so, yeah, they, they're, right now they're turning away, um, animals from, uh, people off the street. They still have to take animals that our cities pick up and take those and they're, they're, and their avenue to move animals out from the shelter to other places because they are a no kill shelter is, I guess, what I understood from them is that all the COVID animals that were picked up in 2020, um, are now, everybody's back to work and they're having to get rid of their animals that they got during the time they were home. And I guess this is a nationwide.
How many can you take?
What they're saying.
So, so the, all the avenues that they normally use to move animals out of here, um, if they can adopt them here are clogged up.
And they have, um, some issues with conditions of the facility and help, so it's.
I know you can't stop them from not getting them spayed or neutered, but it's like, you've got, I mean, it was brought up to me that we have a lot of cats and I'm like, I don't, I don't see them. And then I started looking and they're everywhere. They're running into the storm drains, one right after the other. And I'm just shocked.
But we do have a, uh, we, we are scheduling a meeting again with them on, to talk about budgetary items, um, so, um, we'll, we'll keep you posted on what's going on there.
Yeah, that, that, that's, that, that, that there does, just like every other public service offered their resource limitations to that. So people have to keep that in mind. It's not like that's just the default for everyone that we all, we decided we don't want the dog or the cat. You know, let's take it out to the shelter and just leave it. And they'll build another room.
Any further comments from the commissioners? Oops, got a kitten in the. We have comments from the audience.
We have Joe Brenner.
Here's a Jeff fell out, so this is gonna be interesting. Uh, so I'm Jill from Little Branch and I'm here to talk to you guys, um, on behalf of Be Local about the Summit Nights that we have coming up. We are pairing up with USD 470 for our second annual art crawl, where we will have art from all of the USD 470 schools lining the streets downtown. And, uh, this is an interesting and unique opportunity for our city to, um, install some community pride in our younger generation and, uh, a love, a generational love, um, with the younger generation for our downtown area. We are asking the city to allow us to close Fifth Avenue between, uh, Taylor Drug and Union State Bank with, and we've spoken with both Taylor Drug and Union State Bank and we've had, have their blessing to bring in bounce houses for that event for the children. We have, um, bounce houses that are insured and, uh, licensed with the state of Kansas. And we were wondering if the city might be able to waive that $75 fee in order for us to do that for the children of our community. This is something that is not, uh, we are not gonna be charging for anything, that we know funds, uh, exchanging hands and that. So it's literally just for the kids in the community and the stores will be open and have art in the stores, um, Thursday night, Friday and Saturday, and we invite all of the commissioners, uh, city employees and people within our community to please come down and enjoy some children's art. So basically we're asking for the, a wave of the $75 fee to close that street.
Will it be closed for three days?
3:00 PM to 9:00 PM on Thursday.
Just one day?
Just one day, just a few hours and the, um, we've spoken to the businesses and they, um, I've, I have our full blood, we have our blessing. Taylor Drug and Union State.
Which Thursday?
Thursday, April 27th from 5:00 to 8:00 PM is the event. The street would be closed from 3:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Probably not even as late as 9:00 PM, but as soon as they're closed up.
Should've got that on the agenda for a vote, right?
I, I, so.
If you have a consensus.
So here, here's, um, there, there's gonna be other, there's gonna be other organizations similar to her that are gonna ask for the same thing. So if that's something that you guys are, um, okay with, um, then that's something I can do with my position is, is forgive the, you know, not charge us fees.
And if we, in the future, come and ask for it again, this is like the one event where we would be coming and asking for it if we needed it in the future, then it wouldn't be for the art crawl and the kids and the USD 470. That would be different even to us.
Oh, okay, so your Summit Nights, Be Local.
Be Local.
And so Summit Nights is an event underneath Be Local?
Uh huh, and, uh, and that will be April 27th. So, and although we'll have the art for the whole weekend, the bounce house and things will only be for that small amount of time on Thursday night.
I'm okay with it. You okay with it? When you say other people are gonna come forward, are you talking about on Summit?
Yeah, there was a similar, um, uh, type of event with some wanting to close the street and bring in some kids stuff here recently. It was a different group, I believe. Um, and so they can't, they, they postponed that event because of the weather. They've already paid their, their fee and they were gonna, we're just holding on to it till, um, but, so I guess I just wanna make sure that, uh, that we'd be fair to all.
Consistent in what we do.
Right.
And so that's just all, um, you know, so that's why I would give the commissions kind of guidance on what you wanna see from us on those types of things. What's, uh, where do we, where do we forgive fees? Where do we not? Those types of.
Where, where there's no money exchanging hands, that's, that's where I think we can, I mean, just my opinion, but.
You mean no money isn't no entry fee or no gates or anything?
Yeah, no gates, no, no things that they have to buy in order to participate. I think that kind of makes a difference.
Right, and the, for the, you don't, trying to get all of the kids from the entire town into downtown. And really it's about, uh, installing institutional love or generational love of our community and our smallest, uh, featureings, really, is what it's about. And if we come to ask to close the street for future events, that in my eyes at least, it would not be something that we would be coming to cause then we would have a food truck or whatever parked there, but this is for bounce houses and really just a free community event to try and get kids to love downtown.
I'm okay with it. But you okay with it?
Yeah, impartial. I'm fine either way. I'm not, I'm as fine as me.
Well, you've got three votes. Well, I was once told it only takes three.
I mean, are we, are we voting or?
He just wants a consensus.
I just want guidance.
Yeah, we, yes.
I'm the one that has to explain these applications.
I think, I think as long as they're not making. They're not making money. They're not making money, they're not charging for that ability and it is a community event. It's, you know.
It's open to.
Everybody.
So we hope that ever.
I would say I'm fine with it. If it becomes an issue where we have several events coming and it becomes a consistent thing, then yes, we as a commission probably need to revisit and set some parameters and guidelines under why we choose it this way or this way in the future. All right, time being there up.
Oh, no, you didn't. I was, I was, I, you were saying that, and that made me think, what was the, is that just triple revenue stream to say 75? There's a covering of cost or?
It basically, it covers the cost of bringing the barriers and stuff like that.
It's what it amounts to. It's recouping, recouping staff costs to bring in barriers and do it. And depending on what, what's asked for, if, you know, you're bringing in trash cans, the costs are determined by the types of services that are requested for the event. And so.
I don't believe we'll need trash cans or anything like that for it. Although we have asked the police department to come do popsicle patrol and we reached out to Tank the Tiger and just Ali the Bulldog and.
But those are things they do.
Talking to fire department about two and a little bit.
Those are things they do. You're just giving them another venue.
Yeah.
In which to do it. Yeah, that's, that's, it's not, you're not asking them to provide some special service. You're just saying they do this anyway. Here's an opportunity for you to come down and have some face time with.
Yes.
Brother.
Yes, hopefully it can, it can give a little bit of joy.
We're okay with it.
Thank you.
One else? On our list?
I'll go quick. I'm gonna just run the list. Uh, this one, uh, so Monday night at 6:00 PM is the outstanding student award reception. It'll be at the White Rooms, right room at the college. Mayor, has Tiffany talked to you about the opening remarks?
I just feel my stuff.
Didn't want to wait till Monday night. Then I laid a flyer on your test up there to remind you about the Rice Cali Health Forefront meeting on the 12. It's from one to four, so if you can be there. Yasmin reached out to me, um, earlier in the week and really wanted to encourage any of the elected officials that could be there to be there. And then the, uh, SCK Health Gala is May 6th. I have eight tickets, so, um, I left you guys, um, so let me know how many, who wants what. I got two now, so there's six tickets left, so let me know. And again, that's May 6th. And then, um, on the 15th Street Bridge, we're still waiting on some parks. Uh, hopefully it'll be a couple of weeks now, what we're hearing, that they can get started. The Downtown Alley is still moving forward. Um, they're in the second block and moving forward there. The, um, Travel Center, the survey's completed, um, by Smith and Oaks and, uh, working on, um, the permits to go underneath the, um, railroad tracks for, um, uh, the sewer lines and, and working with the school on easements. And then still need to visit or work some more with the greenhouse on easements. The bike hike trail that's, um, that goes from, um, south, um, I don't know, KDOT, KDOT and Chris Minnan are having some communication issues. He sends stuff to them. They're, I'm, they're not getting the documents the right way or what, but we're still fighting for that. So this may be a June, July timeframe to start on it now, so we're still fighting through that. The Madison overlay from Summit 8, we're gonna be having a pre-construction meeting next week and so that'll probably get started next month. We'll let you know on that. Um, then, um, I left a memo from, uh, Rod on the water complaint that you guys heard on Friday and kind of updating you where it's been in the past and kind of where it's at right now. And then, um, we'll reach out to, um, KAWA and see if they have any, any input or help on that as well. So, but that just kind of gives you some background on, on what's happened to this point and what they found. That's all I've got.
I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second.
The second we adjourn, they will say aye.
Aye.